Okay, let's have a pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now, I'd like to note for the record that we are, this meeting is our statutory meeting that we're required to have each year. And we want to have Mr. Ellis to come forward here. And we're going to have to have, I need a motion to establish the levy rates for the current, the upcoming years. So will you have, Mr. Wilkinson?
Say.
Mr. Baker, second to that. Okay, Ray, would you come up, please, and share those with us?
Oh, we received the information from the Fisher's office, yeah, I think the last day of February. And so what we have to do today is set forth, these are going to be the levy rates for the coming fiscal year, fiscal year 21. Whenever I hit the numbers that was given to me by our assessors, all I really did, all I really had to do was just play in the numbers, double check them. And what it came out to be on regular levy was, oh, $2.752 million, which is a little bit of an increase over last year. And then on the excess levy, of course, those rates are just a little bit different, they're a little bit higher. It's 3.322 million, which is also an increase. When you combine the two, I think we're about $190,000 above what we were last year, which is the first time that this has happened since I've been here. That doesn't mean that we're going to collect it because, you know, we're down, I just got a tax check last week, last year it was about $700,000. This year it was about $450,000.
So are you saying the levy rates have been selling up a little bit?
Well, the property values went up. The levy rates stayed the same. The levy rates on the regular levy are set by statute. It was done a long time ago. We can't fluctuate that, there's no change. It just depends on the property values going up and down, how much you're going to get, or projected amounts you're going to get, you know, the budget. Now, the excess levy rates, they can go down. We're set at 100%. There was a, there was a statute, I don't know how long ago, and I can't even give you the number, but it was set on a maximum amount for excess levy. Some counties actually are a little bit less than 100%, but we're at 100%. And how it gets that way is we put that in excess levy whenever the voters voted on it. So it's set. So we're really going to need it, I tell you.
And we established 100% excess levy.
100% of what we're able to ask for, which comes out to like 3.3 million, I think I just said. And I was surprised, I mean, the value, the property values from the Sessors Office was going up, so they're, you know, estimating collection.
So on our levy call, you know, we have the different components of the levy, what the levy provides for. So it appears that we're going to have adequate funding to meet all of those?
No. I think we're still going to have to cut. Every year I've been here, we've had to cut just a little bit more whenever we go to set everything forth on the levy. We have so much that has to go into transportation and the maintenance is built in there. There's some that is set forth for textbooks and instruction in the schools and the teachers. That, that'll get cut somewhat. I'll cut what I can out of maintenance and transportation. I've done it every year, and if they need money, we always put money back in there at the end of the year to cover the budget, or to cover the expenses in the budget. This year, I think we had agreed, we were going to increase our permanent improvement fund in the levy, and we did that whenever we put it to vote. And the first thing I had to do was cut, what, maybe $50,000 out of, we're right back down to where we were the year before. There was a couple other things we cut. What I hope I'm able to do is just put some stuff back in, whether it's permanent improvement account, or maybe technology, or, you know.
Or are you saying that even though it won't be in the levy money, you get it from somewhere else to reimburse or to fund it?
Well, we have to cut that. I mean, if we have to spend the money, we have to pull it from somewhere else. But we just have to lower the amount that's included in that levy.
Well, that's what I mean, the levy money, if you don't have it 100%, you might be able to get it from somewhere else.
Yeah, we have to, yeah. I mean, we can take it out of other county funds, or, you know, if we, if we watch our budgets and we save the money and, you know, there. We have run into a situation where when we had to have something, we, you know, we've always been able to go out and get that money somewhere.
Okay. So right now, we're putting on for public inspection to the 2021, the levy rates for the 2021 fiscal year, right?
Yes.
That's what we're doing tonight, in compliance with the codes that are shown there. And all of that's approved with the State Board and the State Tax Commissioner. Now, eventually, we're going to come back here later in the year, once these are, have been approved, apparently, right?
They're going to be approved in three weeks, I think it's.
Well, we're scheduled to come back on April the 21st.
That's when they're going to be.
Okay. So that's why I said, now they're just available for the public to see what the rates are.
Yes.
Which, I guess that's what we have here, our file proposals, and that you're looking to add also, right?
Yeah.
So Mr. O'Donnell, he wants to come over and see what those are. He probably already has got them, but he could.
We need to publish those, don't we? Thanks, Ray.
Yes.
Okay.
Once the board. Then again, it has to be published. I'll send you that email tomorrow.
Thank you.
We don't want to get photos, though.
Sure, we'll let it.
See the bills.
For two reasons. One, we'd have to, and two, Sean prefers that he does. Does anybody have any questions at this time for what Ray did? I just wanted a little explanation, so because I understand, we do it every year, but I have to have my members.
Yeah, once we propose them, then they go into the paper, and then they get approved in April, if you approve. Then from that point on, I get sent to the State Department, and then about that time, you know, in the middle of all this, we start the budgeting process.
Okay. All right. All right, so the, for establishment of the levy rates, if I have anything else you want to add about, about the topic? If not, then is that all yes to firm out for public inspections?
Yeah.
All yes? Okay. All right, then I need a motion to suspend this until April 21st, 2020, when we come back to take further action on these. Have a motion to do that. Fred?
Second.
And Carol, second to that. Anybody in favor of that? All yes? Okay. All righty. So we'll return on April 21st. Thank you, Ray. Now, let's, as we conclude, statutory meeting, we've had. Now, we're going to move into our regular meeting. Now, first, let's approve the minutes of March 3rd, 2020, a regular meeting, please.
Will do.
Rowdy?
Say.
Carol made that motion, or second, I'm sorry. That's an all yes?
Yeah, it says vote.
Yes. All yes? Okay. All right. Public comments? We don't have anyone signed it, am I on the sheet? I don't believe in it there. We don't have any public comments tonight. Now, Mr. Gosney is not here, okay. He was on the agenda, and he told me yesterday when I saw him, he's speaking to you all tomorrow night, so he's just forgotten. Boy, he's got ill, one or the other.
I won't tell you where he is.
Oh, so you know where he is? Okay. All right. Well, maybe he's not ill, then. All right, so anyway, we won't have a preparation report from Mr. Gosney tonight, apparently.
Get him next time.
Okay, get him next time. Okay. Let's go to administrative section, then. Do I have a motion with those? Something? Larry?
And Rowdy, second to that.
Wilkinson, Mr. Baker. Jeff?
Item A, revised policy for 30-day public review and comment, and that's policy 5421, which is our grading policy. And there's now a new requirement for boards of education to weight grades for AP, dual credit, international back award, and honors courses. And what's new in there is the dual credit courses. Up until this coming school year, dual credit has not been a weighted class, or have not been weighted classes. And the policy is in here, Mr. King was at the very bottom of the.
Yes, sir.
It's the first, the very first page of the policy. The last sentence is what has changed. And it's just been changed to add, it says, "The board shall issue weighted grades for advanced placement dual credit." And then in parentheses, it says, "Dual credit weighted classes will begin with the 2021 ninth grade cohort." So this will only take effect for next year's incoming ninth graders. So international back award and honors courses for which high school credit is to be awarded.
And the word "shall" has also been placed in there. The word "shall" is.
Yeah, it was mine, it wasn't.
That is correct, sir.
Now, is this a State Board policy that we're having to adopt?
Yes.
You shall do it.
Yes, we shall. Item B is accept a low bid from Davis Athletics for the replacement of the bleachers at Hamel PKA totaling $88,750. Item C is to accept a low bid from RM Huffman for the gym floor replacement at Hamel PKA totaling $130,000. Greg had been here tonight, he would have told you about that work that's going to take place.
He'll reel next.
He'll reel next. Items D through H are several out-of-state trips to which we'll approve, or I have the board approve tonight, but don't like to lose our activities if they happen. Item D is an out-of-state travel for Angie Earlin to Chicago, Illinois, April 27th through the 29th, 2020, to the MAF intervention executive summer. Item E is out-of-state travel for Jerika Atkins to Norfolk, Virginia, April 14th through the 17th, 2020, to the 2020 National Family Engagement Summer. Item F is out-of-state travel for Jerika Atkins to Orlando, Florida, June 27th through July 2nd, 2020, to the Model Schools Conference. Item G is out-of-state travel for Courtney Fraser to Columbus, Ohio, April the 1st through the 3rd, 2020, to the Microsoft Excel Beyond the Basics training. Item H, an out-of-state trip for Hart's PKA kindergarten and first grade students to Louisville, Kentucky, May the 26th, 2020. Item I, school volunteers who on occasion may also service bus chaperones for athletic events, academic competitions, or school outings, and have completed volunteer orientation. Item J is a contract with Paula Staley to provide school improvement services to Guy Valley Middle School during the 2019-2020 school year, according to the terms of the contract. And item K, approval of salary upgrade according to House Bill 206, West Virginia Code 18A-4-2 for the following employee, and that's the $1,500 salary for special education directors, or special education teachers.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? I mean, administrative line?
Guess my only comment is, if someone else has made it, is, you know, some of these hires are kind of mandated upon us, and we weigh our options, decide that is the only option we have. We really weren't given the choices of what we were going to do, and at least it's one of these hires. And I won't specify which one, we all know which one we're talking about, but.
There's only one.
I, I, I hope that works out for the best. And can we expect a presentation from a person as to what she's going to be doing at some point in time?
Yes, the contract spells out.
Spells out.
What, what her role will be. We met with her, Mr. King and I met with her last week. She, one of the requirements that we've added in here is that she attend.
A monthly report.
That last meeting of the board.
Each month?
Each month, to report out on progress.
Okay.
You'll get to meet her very soon.
Okay. Now, all the deficiencies, we want to be able to, and I think Mr. King is going to have, she's going to develop some kind, something to reflect the progress being made, is that right?
Yes, we will mutually develop a progress monitoring plan, beginning tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock, we're meeting.
That way we'll be able to see the progress being made.
And she will be the one in charge of these improvements that we need, rather than whoever is there.
Although, who is, I mean, as far as the principal, whomever it may be, will be in charge of the school and its operation.
Right.
And so she won't be in charge of that person.
She'll be in charge of.
She answers to me if I'm worried. Yeah, so we'll make that clear. But she's going to work the plan, she will start tomorrow, we have a meeting with her tomorrow. There's some things, even, even without the teachers, you know, we're closed for a period of time, we can still be working on. I mean, there'll come a time where she, you know, if we do shut down everything, then obviously we're not going to need her to be doing any work.
That's why I said that, we're not going to have her.
Right, we know there's nobody.
She's out of school very much, so.
She understands that.
Yeah.
We, we have had that conversation.
Well, then won't you reach the point towards, I don't know what we'll have to do anymore, but should we have school? At the end of the school year, when the acting principal's not there, there may be things that she's not really, she wouldn't be needed then, maybe, is that true?
It's true, but we just have to wait and see what happens. We have no idea.
And all this contract, just for this current school year now?
This only, up till end June.
Yeah, we can anticipate another contract in the new year with the new principal. All right, any other comments or questions about anything else for that? Has Mike done all of this, fed on these items?
Yeah.
Okay, finance section, motion, please.
I'm sure that Fred made the motion, and Rowdy seconded that one.
Ray?
A, schedule of invoice is total of $731,475.98. Now, this is attached, any questions, just let me know. P, budget supplement is $6,883,399.6. That's attached, and that's just from a variety of different projects we added, where I got the grants and carryover amounts from, from last year. There's a wide assortment of budget supplements there.
Okay. Good. And we've had these to look at, so any by any questions, if I have any concerns with them? Is that an all yes fed on the finance items?
Yes.
All, all but yes. Okay. Personnel, then, motion, please.
I'm going.
Carol? And Rowdy? Mr. King?
Letter A, employment of professional personnel pending issuance of first class permit. Item B, transfer of professional personnel. Item C, employment of substitute service personnel. Item D, employment of substitute service personnel pending completion of bus operator requirements and issuance of bus operator certification. Item E, employment of service personnel. Item F, transfer of service personnel. Item G, employment of extracurricular personnel. Item H, leave of absence. Item I, retirement and resignations.
Three more retirements, huh? Okay, does anybody have any questions regarding personnel matters? None? So has that an all yes fed on personnel?
Yes.
All but, yeah, all yes. Okay. All right, that brings us down to comments and concerns. Well, we do have a legal update, but first, we have comments and concerns first.
I have.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Of course, you're all aware of the effort to get flashing lights at Midway Elementary School, and worked quite a while on this, and I'd like to thank Mr. King for all the work that he's did on this. And in case you aren't aware of it, I'm here to inform you that we'll be getting the lights at Midway School. Matter of fact, they've already indicated, indicated where the lights will be placed, and it's just a matter of getting everything together. You're getting information from Mr. King on that. So the last school that actually needs lights, in my opinion, now have the lights, or will have the lights.
Thanks, sir.
The board will have to pay for the initial cost of the lights, and these will be reimbursed through the parking highways. I'd like to thank some of the other, they're not here, some of the parents in the Allen Creek area that helped work on this, some of pushed real hard for this in the last hours, and I told you we'd get them, it just takes a while. There's one person I'd like to especially thank, he asked me not to use his name, but we had one person in the Allen Creek area that really, really pushed hard for this. He told me, he said, "The lights will be put there," and they will be put there.
Great, great. Well, that's good news. We know you've told us they were going to be there, even when I come down at you at times, but, Ray.
Well.
Certain need.
I was going to keep pushing until I, they put me six feet under, whether I'm on the border, puts on the border or not, I was never going to give a.
You could be there maybe the first, when they light them up the first time, so.
Well, hope to be. Is there anything, Mr. King, that I forgot to mention? You're more up there. Mr. King has worked hard on this for a period of time.
I think, I think he's covered pretty well. We're just, we'll just wait further directions from Mr. Hammond's. As, as you can read there, we've submitted the superintendent's information, he'll sign, and we'll, we'll get that ball rolling, and once we get it, we get the three bids, and let her go, we'll get it done.
Just tell him if Priestley has an E in the word.
I'll try to remember that. We did have to correct, it was, they had a little bit of hypothermia, and they thought it was Midland to begin with, we had to straighten that out, so we're, we're getting there.
Tell them that's incorrect spelling.
I'll take care of it, sir. Be glad to do that.
The town's name.
Okay, you can see where the lights are positioned, very, very, very good location of the light. As you come around from Jim's Restaurant there, you shouldn't immediately see the light, and as you come off the corridor, you, I don't know how you could miss it.
Yeah.
So excellent location.
Very good, very good. Okay. Do we have, is there anybody else, are there any other issues, things? Want to make Mr. Mieke go last, because he probably, or a lot more than I do. Couple of things I had just to remind her, Friday evening is when we have our scheduled board, special board meeting to do two things. One, to look at the applications of the persons that have applied for the superintendency. Every, everyone now has received a packet, and the, the packet consists of 28 applications. I know those four of them are in-county people, and the other 24 are out-of-county people. So in your package, you have 28 applications there. Thirteen of them are from the Indeed, I don't know what that's called, site, whatever it might be called, but those are people that saw that, the notice there and applied through that. The other 15 people applied from various advertisers where they saw that we were seeking a superintendency. So when Dr. O'Call, you'll find that, he's, he's put them in those two categories. So when you find it, you're going to see, the Indeed people are showing one packet, and everyone else is showing the other. But there are 28 total applicants there. There's a little overview of the group, or each individual, and of course, their resumes going to more depth about everyone there. But what we need to do Friday is to decide, of those 28 people, how many of them we're going to interview. So now, what we are tasked from now until Friday is, each, each one of us has a matrix in there, and that per, every one of those 28 people beside of each question or characteristic, there's, their names are listed. So what I want us to do is to look at that applicant number one, wherever he's listed there, then look at their resumes and whatever, and then put a, there's a scale there that you choose, each board member's to fill out the matrix for all those people. Then on Friday evening, what we then do is, and I've asked Mr. Mieke if he would do that for us, he would tabulate those four, so we can see how those people rank. Now, this is something Dr. O'Call developed, and it's to help identify those that are, you might want to interview. Now, is that going to be the only criteria that we use? I don't think so. I think there may be other criteria that we have, you know, obviously, it's discretion of using, you know, things that we may know or may not know, but he just bases it on strictly on statistical things. But we will look at those and then make a decision of who and all that. Now, we, right now, we're scheduled, if we, unless we change it, the following Saturday, a week later, this is on Friday, so it'd be eight days later, that we would actually conduct interviews themselves. So we'll, once again, first we have to see how many we're going to interview, then we'll kind of worry about that schedule later.
So what time are we doing this, on Friday, March 20th? I don't have it on my calendar.
Five o'clock. Yeah. So we have two things to do. We have to do that, then in addition to that, we have to come up with 10 questions that we're going to ask at the interviews. Now, Dr. O'Call gave you, all of us. I'm using yours as my foot marker. There it is.
Sorry I'm not in the voice, but.
Yes, you are, you're, you just, put it in. But, but what we have to do, as you'll recall from Howard told us from the get-go, when we have our interviews, we've got to ask 10 questions. We have to ask the same 10 questions of the individuals we interviewed. So he gave us, if you remember, about 70 different questions that other boards of education had used, for, you know, to kind of give us a model that we could go from. So on Friday, after we decided who we're going to interview, we have to decide the 10 questions we're going to use. What I have just given you is just suggestions. Those are just 10 that I roughed out. Jews, it won't hurt my feelings if we don't want to use any of those, or some of them, I just, a week or so ago, I've been trying to think of things that we've been popping that are of interest to us, and thought that might be things that we may want to ask them. But once again, it won't hurt my feelings if we don't use any of those, or some of those. And Dr. O'Call has provided some, and you may have other things that you might want to ask. But on Friday night, next week, or this week, we have to come up with 10 questions. Now, what I have to do then, the next day or so, is provide to Dr. O'Call who we're going to interview and what the questions are, because then they're going to, they'll put it in their own format to where, when we have each individual come in, those questions are going to be provided for them, and then we will ask the questions. Now, every board member will ask two questions, and that's pretty easy on that, and we'll ask the same of each one. Everything is to be, all interviews will be conducted in an hour's time. The idea is, there will be 45 minutes set up to ask the 10 questions, and then 15 minutes for, you know, some follow-ups that may come from that, that we might want to clarify some things. So anyway, those are just some things for Friday night, if you, after you have a chance to look at them, if you have any questions or something, you can get with me, and that's pretty much it. You have the applications now, we're completing the matrix, and then the matrix is to help us decide who we want to interview. But once again, I think there'll be some intangibles in there that we'll have that may factor into that, too. And then Mr. Mieke volunteered to work on the matrix tabulation, and then we can see, you know, statistics, like, this might, these might be the people you might want to interview. But once again, we have flexibility in how we use that. And then we'll fill up our 10 questions, I'll share those with him, and then he'll have all that prepared for us prior to our meeting, a week later on that Saturday morning. We have it at 9:00, so that's something we'll have to decide. It's going to be a lot, it's going to be based on how. It's going to be a lot, it's going to be based on how many people we're going to interview, you know, how many, how long the day's going to be, you know, with, with our schedule out, once we know how many we're going to interview. But in...
All right. Will the applicants know the questions we're going to ask?
No.
Okay.
No, no, they won't know. They'll all be asked the same thing, but no, they won't know what they are. Let's see. Mr. Mikkiv, were you going to mention the hotline for the counseling? Okay. The other day, Mr. Mikkiv, I think Jeff's going to talk a little bit more about our meetings at State Board, or just, I thought you were. Okay, but I just, one thing that I was going to mention, one of the things they asked me was about, it was counseling, was a question that, this was during the open session, it was about counseling, and how we communicated about things. I mentioned that we had a bullying hotline on our website, webpage, our county webpage, and they asked, "Do you have a counseling one?" And I said, "No, we don't, but that's an idea." So, I discussed that with Mr. Mikkiv about us adding to our webpage a counseling hotline. Now, that would provide for maybe a parent or student that's a little, you know, introverted and outgoing, and maybe is afraid to approach somebody or whatever, to call in here, and I think Jeff can explain the procedure, he got in mind there, where they, obviously, they can't remain anonymously, you know, they can't be anonymous, at some point they have to be identifiable. But at the school level, if they were fearful for some reason, they would, you know, would be able to, somebody here at this level would hear that, you know, maybe they need counseling, and, you know, discreet way, get in touch with those kids, but that's something that, you know, we're, we want to kind of add to it, and I told them, I thought we could do that, that wouldn't, you know, should be...
It'd be very simple to do, and Kevin Titchard is the director responsible for our counselors, so that, all those contacts could go directly to him, but I'll get with Angie Arling, our technology director, and get that set up very soon. I have that up and ready.
But that's all I had, Jeff.
Well, I keep looking at the agenda here, Greg not being here, I did want to mention just quickly that our upcoming CEFP dialogue meetings, those have all been canceled. Talked to Dave Ferguson yesterday, he was on his way to the school building authority office to talk to Mr. Roach. It's, it's his understanding that the timeline's going to move because of what's happened with this, with the school closures and not being able to get together and have our meetings. So, he's going to give me some information that I can relay to you, and, you know, once I have it, I'll let you know what's going on. The CEFP dialogue, few dialogue meetings have been canceled.
They've been postponed, probably.
They've been postponed, suspended, and picked back up at a later, later time. I've asked Mr. Roy and Mr. Dyer to be here this evening to talk about what we're doing with Food Service. I know there was some discussion before the meeting started, John, I think it'd be good to kind of go back and about what the plan is for the rest of the day, plans moving forward based upon what, what we have.
First, I'll say that we've had multiple plans, but...
They're fluid.
It's fluid, that's, that's the truth. It's, it's hard to put into words what happens when you, first, we were in a meeting here with the Health Department, listening to what he said, coupled with, maybe it was the next day, I was in a meeting with Food Service Directors, and we get a call that passed by the schools. As a result of precautions for this virus, so immediately, you can imagine kind of the pain, because we know that we're responsible for feeding these kids, starting on Monday, this is a Friday. Our high school gets orders on Fridays, our elementary's getting their orders on Mondays. Everybody's friend was to call the, call US Food, see what their plan is, what they're going to do, so initially, it was a real process team work. We got some guidance from them on what they were going to do, and I shared that with Mr. King, Mr. Mikkiv, about, they set their expectations for us, their priorities are going to be hospitals, nursing homes, schools. So, when you see a letter like that from their vendor, that they're getting groceries from, getting a market order, that's kind of alarming, so to say the least. So, the next, next couple of days seem like a couple of weeks, and I'm trying to figure out what, what I need to do, and who I need to call, and come up with plans for, at the end of the day on Friday, I, when schools were closed, I had already made plans to centralize the kitchens so that we can at least get something out and send it out that way. And then, by the end of that day, I'm not sure what time it was that day, they made the decision to have part of our employees here. So, as I was making plans to centralize, I found out we're going to have cooks and bus drivers available. My first thoughts was that we could send those out on buses, but I wanted to make sure they were clean, because it's, it's November, it's end of February, lots of, buses need to be cleaned, you know, and especially taking all the precautions for, for food handling and safety, and that was on the back of my mind. So, I had to get the buses clean first before I decided to get those out, especially with the public safety, the health involved there. So, my main goal of the course of that time was to try to come up with a plan to feed kids, as many kids as I thought we could, and I knew after Sunday that we wouldn't have much participation in. An event where we had meal to be at every site where people come to pick up, we knew there would be some, lots of folks were already being told to stay in, just social distancing became a factor when, at some point in this as well, regulations not to have people guide themselves or being socially distant, I suppose, but lots, lots of factors came into that, and my main goal was to keep in mind the, the safety of the public, students and everybody alike. So, I didn't want to jump in and just do something, even though you have the plan, I had to do that. So, today, I think we had 154, I had it written down, 154 meals go out. Yesterday was, was right around 60, 58, I think, but we were kind of working backwards here, but I got lots of, lots of direction from the Office of Child Nutrition, and Ms. Smith can kind of vouch for this about the USDA's particulars when it deals with food safety and that kind of thing. We often require our cooks, not often every day, we require them to keep production records of exactly how much food they use in meals, down to the teaspoon. We, we have an audit finding, it's not a finding, but it was a technical assistance with, over a slice of bread being white instead of wheat. So, those kinds of things that those folks deal with on a daily basis, you know, that was their, that's what they, that's what they do, they, they, it's not nitpicking, it's just being careful with student health, nutrition, and they were calling me, telling me that we need to get food out, we need to use our summer menus, we'll, said we'll backtrack and we will, we'll figure out all the paperwork later, and as the weekend went on, I got waivers I had to... I had to create menus, but come to find out, there wasn't a whole lot of stock that we had in our freezers, or anything that was coming in that kind of matched up, so we had to add lid. And for folks that have been told for years and years and years, you have to put this much, this many teaspoons of this into your soup, for me to say, "We just have to put food out, we have to get it out," there was a little bit of panic on cooks' parts as well, because they're not used to that. They're used to going by the book and making sure that it's done the right way, and, you know, we were allowed these waivers just as long as we adhered to food safety, as long as we adhered to, you know, a couple of the factors, recording claims, which I'll leave in the data, just to say, but there was just a mountain of information coming all at once, and then sometimes it would change. So, the past, past four days have been full months in mine, and we've got a plan tomorrow, I think, and it's not going to be a perfect plan, there are going to be some hiccups, we've got a new group of people who are going to distribute food. Today, it was, it was volunteers and people who had come to the doors, students who not go into the buildings to get, we've been, we've been told that we won't, we don't need to have them in the buildings at all, and I know we've had them cancel all sporting events, where everything around here is kind of closed down, as far as that goes, so to have kids come in the building in a congregate setting, we couldn't, sitting down and eating, it just didn't happen as far as public health was concerned. In saying that, tomorrow, we're going to send buses out, we're going to hit every, every bus stop, every, every driver's going to leave like they would at the end of the day, and along their routes, they're going to drop off food if somebody's at the bus stop, if they've told them beforehand that they, they want it, and our, our job now is going to be trying to get meals when this picks up. If we have people in the building, great. Tomorrow's going to be a challenge. Just getting, I'm going to have some people back, we're going to radio back and forth to see if we have anybody out there that wanted something, that didn't get it, or we missed anybody. The reason I want them to go through their normal routes is because if we did miss somebody on the way up, maybe on their way back, they can come out. Just lots of, lots, lots of logistics there, and Jeff has helped me tremendously, there have been a lot of help from everybody else, you know, there's a lot of work that's going to have to be done, and hopefully, we have people here to help us do it, but that may not be the case here in the next couple of days. I'm not sure what else I can give among if you have any questions I can answer.
John, at the bus stops, if like a parent or an older child would come there, can they pick up for their siblings?
Yes, yeah, they can. Actually, every, tomorrow, we've got volunteers on the bus with bus drivers, so they can keep track of the meals, and we have to write down names for reporting purposes, but if, if the sibling's there and they want meals for their younger brothers, or if, as long as somebody's there, they can give us a name that we can write down where...
I have another question. If a child is there that is in college, but the college is closed down, they can...
This is just for children who are...
In Lincoln County schools?
In schools, or school-aged.
Okay.
Reimbursement rates for this, there was some confusion about, because we were doing summer menus, what we should do, because we're going to have meals going out, we're going to have to try to recoup some of that, some of those funds, but through the waiver, it's going to be at the same reimbursement rate as the National School Lunch program, which is the highest rate. If it was through the summer, through the summer program, it would just be around $2 or something. So, it, it won't be about, it's not going to be about getting, getting money back for this. We're not going to put out enough, as much as we normally would in this situation, so... And I, we've been up, we've been in discussion, I've been in discussion with other counties about what they're doing, but moving forward, we're going to assess the situation tomorrow, see if there's a better way to do that. Hopefully, we have folks in the buildings on Thursday, and that'll be tremendous stuff, even though I know we had other obligations with destruction as well, so it's going to be a group effort.
They, they, they will pick up the food at each school?
Oh, yeah, there's still pickup spots, too.
No, what I mean, the food, the food has been prepared...
The bus drivers are going, they're going to start from their, where they would start at the end of the day.
In the evening, gotcha.
Get lunch from that school, go on their route, and then bring any leftovers back.
Gotcha.
Well, if you run short of help in some, some, could you, could we not ask the seniors to help? A lot of counties, you know, require that for our class.
And we can't have school-aged children in the buildings.
About riding on the bus, ain't they 18 years old?
That's a new question.
And how they think it would be okay.
Definitely, if you guys can think of anything that you think may help, shoot it my way, I'm all ears.
Man, I like the way, John, what you say, you're just going to learn about what I have to...
We'll, we'll have to assess this by then, depending on what comes out about who shows up the word, and it'll change.
Probably the longer it goes on, you know, the more participation you'll have, it's more to hear about, word of mouth, kind of thing.
Definitely.
But don't you think after the teachers get back, that you'll have plenty of help then?
We, well, we will, we'll have help when teachers come back, when all staff reports, that's support staff and everybody, we do have plenty of help, and I'm just hoping we make it that far, we'll see.
Can you let us know if any hiccups or something, if you need to help, but as well as Mr. Mikkiv, he'll share with us.
Regarding our employees, you definitely kind of said in devotion what we're doing this week, when he sent out his letter Saturday evening, so we just kind of played it, you know, very close to what he defined, as he defined essential employees to be. Most counties did the very same thing, I mean, we're, everyone's pretty much on the same page, there are a few differences I've, I've learned and heard about across the state, but everyone will be back to work Thursday and Friday. Next week for us, Monday's a holiday, it's an OS day, I call it a holiday, it's kind of like a holiday, so we're, we're to follow our school calendar, so if you've got OS days in there, if you've got spring breaks canceled, you're supposed to follow it, tape it. So, next week, you know, our employees, we need, we need to make a decision, there should be some discussion here about what the plan is after Friday, so, you know, what happens Tuesday.
So, Monday is, we don't have to think about that?
Monday, we don't have to worry about that. Next Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, we need to have some decision as to what the expectations are for our employees.
Okay, so the Governor made those for us this week?
Yes, essentially.
Well, Senate joined them at the end of the week, Thursday, Friday, and having the teachers. So, what you're saying, next Tuesday through Friday, we've got to decide.
He's placed that responsibility on the...
Because they close school through the end of next week, now we, we don't know what's going to happen after next week, do we? We close even further.
It's, the closing is through Friday, March 27th, and we were told in a meeting, Kirk and I participated in this afternoon, that a decision will be made sometime next week, whether it's extended.
We wouldn't be shocked if that happened, I don't think. So, what we have to do is make a decision, as to Tuesday through Friday of next week, who's going to have to come to work.
You know, I know a lot of these children don't have internet services, but all of them have TV services. Depending on how long we have to be out, there could be some teaching done through Armstrong on that channel there, our teachers could take turns and do some teaching on there with the kids. It wouldn't hurt one day a week for them to go on with their school-aged children and teach a class and...
We could always talk to Mr. Van...
Yeah, we have to reach out to Brian and see.
Everybody doesn't have access to that, but some might, so it would help some.
You know, Armstrong doesn't cover Gruffville or something.
Yeah, or that way, so.
They don't?
No.
I thought they covered everybody.
They don't go to Port town free for anything like that.
And all, everybody in Marjorie has to do it.
But it could put some people...
That's a good idea. Maybe something, yeah. So I, I, I just don't think we can go out any further than a week at a time.
Yeah, not until we know for sure how it's going to go.
Well, I mean, what we, we're gonna have to, first of all, we've just heard Mr. Roy complaining about the food program. Beginning next Tuesday, you know, are there gonna be cooks and bus drivers and those people that are gonna be doing this? Or is this gonna be able to conclude this week? And if, if they are gonna be out there, um, doing that, are, what about everybody else? Are they gonna be exempted from working and allowed to stay home? Are we gonna tell everybody that we're gonna require everyone to work, uh, and do the things, you know, teachers do the things that they need to be doing as part of preparation? Maybe begin to get some more, uh, instructional type materials prepared for the kids? But we've gotta make that decision. But if we don't have anybody working, there won't be any food going anywhere. That, that process will be over with. Unless the National Guard would somehow intervene with, in this long-term plan that we've heard is possible. But, um, so what we have to decide is next week, um, Jeff, he may have his...
It's, I, I, my, you know, it's difficult for me to think about just bringing in certain classifications of employees and not others. So that's what I was, I was really, all superintendents were caught off guard Saturday evening with the announcement that teachers wouldn't have to report. Classifications such as aides and secretaries were left off the list of those that the governor had declared as essential for the purposes of being able to get meals out to students. So, in my mind, it's just, you know, how do you bring in service employees and not having professionals working with them?
It's not fair.
It's not.
Well, no, I, I'm, I'm just gonna say, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, and everyone can benefit by being there. Now, even if the, uh, professional staff come in, doesn't necessarily mean that they're gonna be congregating or anything.
No, they'd be in their rooms.
So, I mean, they can still have the separation where they're doing things that they have to do in their classroom.
Maybe we could even look at bringing like half in one day and the other half on that day.
Well, but you're bringing at least bus drivers and cooks and everybody in every day. At what point is it unfair?
It is unfair for you.
I think, uh, I'm, essentially, like, if we're, if we're gonna have some come, that we should have them all come. They all have things they can do.
I think we'll get grievances. We may get grievances from what's happened this week. We wouldn't be surprised.
You'd be grievances with people saying that I had to come and you didn't?
Yes.
I guess we could use the bus drivers to do a double run if they wouldn't know the kids on them, the extra runs to deliver those meals.
Well, but they're, but now you're saying that they're gonna work and other people aren't?
No, I'm saying that they're on half of the time, but I said they wouldn't know the kids.
I know what you mean. Yeah, I don't know what legitimately had to do with these guys over here, but they've tried to figure out how they get to everybody as it is.
Who will be in bus at every stop?
I just don't like that they had such a short period to throw this, um, work together. And we talked about busy work, and I feel like that's what it was. They threw busy work together for the kids. And I, I know it was necessary to do that because that's all they could do. But I feel like that they needed more and they didn't have the time to do, do it justice. Like worksheets. But we're taking care of ours, but not everybody will do that.
Right, that's true.
But back to our original prior, or not problem, our...
Our kids' homework, grandchildren's homework was every one of them had to write a letter to momma. And so that was their busy work today, besides their homework.
That's true.
Extra, extra. Okay. Anybody else? I believe if we're gonna have some people come to work, they're the ones who come to work. That's my opinion.
I'd say so too.
Me too. No problem.
The only fair way to do it.
If I was a teacher, I could find the rest in my room to keep me busy.
Well, nothing can...
Well, I mean, excuse my stupidity, but let me just ask, i- if, if we're not bringing in teachers this week, are they being paid?
Oh, yeah.
So we're bringing in, we're, we're bringing in our bus drivers and service personnel, making them work for the paycheck the teachers are getting, even though they don't have to come in?
Right.
There is no fairness in that.
That's what Jeff's alluding to there, that some people aren't happy and they may grieve that.
I know, I mean...
But you didn't make that decision.
Oh, no, no, no.
The governor made that decision. No.
But next week, we get to make the decision.
But it's on us for next week.
But everybody gets paid for the company work.
No, the, these days are not having to be made up. They're part of the two-hundred-day employment contract. So everybody's being paid for these days. Some have had to come to work to earn that day's pay, and some haven't. Yeah. And next week, since the governor's called school off for next week, that's gonna be part of the two-hundred-day term for all of our employees. Now, the O S day falls, whereby that just happens to be the day we didn't have to make up, so it's a vacation back. Uh, but the other day, it will be a part of the two-hundred-day contract and everybody gets paid. And we've been told that these days do not have to be made up. They're part of the national and federal, uh, state emergency.
So when our calendar ends, it ends. We didn't make that decision.
And spring break will go on as scheduled.
Yeah, well, it sounds like everyone's on the same page here. I, I just, I think our employees need to know now so that they could be planning, you know, because some of our teachers, I mean, they have children. That's, that's been a, a big question that we have received, is our employees, when they come to work, is it possible for them to bring their children? And, um, and we've been told repeatedly, the answer to that question is no, that children are to stay home. And I know that puts a burden, you know, on, on people, but, uh, it's been a clear message and we communicated that. And I know surrounding counties have as well with their employees, that they're not to bring their children with them to work during this time.
Some of the logic behind that is that if they all congregate, you'll have, you know, where you're trying to keep people separated, you'll...
Oh, John, what are you gonna do? Do you need a babysitter?
Something you might wanna check on Jeff.
Are you volunteering here?
We're required to come to work next week.
Bring me that sweet boy.
They have to use a sick patient, we're required to work.
Uh, we still continue to follow our, our, our sick, uh, sickly policy. Now, there, there is a provision in there, uh, and I am struggling with the...
Immuno-compromised.
All right, per the practice of the day.
What's the term?
Immuno-compromised.
Immuno-compromised. Says quite, no, it says quite centennial, right, Sean?
Centennial.
We are to make accommodations for those who have underlying health conditions. That could be, uh, them reporting to work, maybe being isolated from others. It can even, depending on their, their health issue or condition, it may even mean being able to work from home. So we've been told to be very flexible. We have to have something from a physician, I see a grid on the place. I know it's a... Um, and we've had, what, maybe two such? I know one came in on fax, and then I think there was a question about a service employee.
The dad had a doctor's statement saying that they have to have this accommodation.
Good. Because in, on Facebook, there was a list of them that said, "I'm a diabetic." Well, if they'd put down those cakes and candy bars, they wouldn't be diabetic. So I wouldn't trust that unless a doctor said...
That's what we were told in our conference. We had to, we'd have to have a doctor's statement, saying they had to have this accommodation made for them.
As even we're had, have had today in the last five hours, is our females who are pregnant, would, how, how compromised would that make them? Because there are, there are statements coming from across the, the big pond, uh, from Europe. There are statements being passed from the West Coast coming. And, you know, social media can cause hysteria. And we don't have a deal with that one yet. That's gonna be one that Mr. Mikew and I are gonna have to be working on first thing in the morning because we have several pregnant folks out there, so.
We did not get back to the doctor again?
It, it will, but who, how, how, how will that be determined? It's yet to be...
Well, I mean, but some pregnancies may be more risky than others, right?
Look, if a doctor's willing to sign off and say, "This person has an ingrown toenail. I believe they're immunosuppressed or immunocompromised," then we treat them differently. If the doctor's willing to sign off for it, no matter how ridiculous, then I think we have to honor that.
That, that, and I think that's where we are, Mr. Baker. I did, and that's why I brought this up.
And I'm not saying that any of these things are ridiculous. I just made that example.
I guess.
Just to say that if a doctor is willing to sign off on it and say, "This person is in a compromised position," for whatever reason, we have to respect that. We don't subsume our judgment to that of a doctor.
But that doesn't mean that they can't be, uh, doing something else, work-related.
That's right. That, that's correct.
Something for them to do.
Even though they may not...
They're meant to be isolated in their classroom, let any interact with anybody else.
Good, good.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mikew, what else?
Uh, see, uh, we talked about the school calendar. I think we mentioned before the meeting this evening that we will not be taking the summative assessment this year, so that is being waived. If we do come back, jump right back into, um, you know, our curriculum and instruction for the remainder of the year. Based upon everything that we're hearing, you know, you are seeing this as well, is, I'd be very surprised if we're back this year. I, I can just see that, you know, kinda where the direction this is going, that we're not gonna have school this year. So we'll, you know, we'll see. Again, I, we anticipate there'll be some announcement next week coming from the, uh, from the governor. Uh, it was, it was made clear to us in our phone conference Sunday that when our teachers come back, there, there's an effort underway that we are contacting every student. That someone has the responsibility of contacting every student, each home, to check on our students, to see if there's anything that they need, to make them aware of the fact that we're gonna, uh, be delivering meals so that, you know, they're knowledgeable. That will be homework assign, assignments will be sent home, uh, that can be picked up from the bus operators. And that's what we're gonna need a lot of help on the buses, is, uh, having, uh, having aides or teachers on the bus that can help distribute, uh, this instructional materials for our students.
No, that makes sense, except if you have some that aren't going to go get homework.
And that's what I have. That's, that you know, as you know, is what I have. There's so many questions. We were talking about promotions, pretensions, you know, that, what's that gonna look like? You, you have seniors who are graduating this year, so, you know, what's this gonna mean for, for those students?
You're gonna have hit and miss, but there's nothing you can do about it. You're going to have to do it.
We're gonna have the grief as a problem.
I saw where proms have been canceled in a lot of places.
Sure have been canceled.
We can't. I just spent five hundred and some dollars this weekend on my daughter's prom dress, so we're not canceling proms. I'll tell you right now.
You might be having a prom problem.
I'll tell you right now, there will be a massacre if y'all didn't cancel prom. Not for me, but...
Well, I'm afraid that things aren't looking very good.
You know, graduation, please.
Right.
Better lose weight and get into it, dude. Cause you'll have to wear it, get to work.
Nah, I will never fit in a prom. I'm getting my lane and do it.
All right, good.
Okay, I, um, lots of information we could talk about. I, I don't think there's anything else that's pressing that, uh, we need to share with you. I, I, other than, and Kirk and Angie have been working on this. Was it a Facebook page that we talked about creating?
Yes.
That we can get information now?
Yes. That's, that, that will, that will take place tomorrow. Uh, we will initiate a, a county central office Facebook page, uh, to disseminate information. We're, we're putting updates on our county website daily. Uh, we are also, we, every, we started this, uh, yesterday at two o'clock every day. We're using Office three sixty-five Teams where all administrators and central office directors are doing a, like, in the old days, Skype. But we're communicating, doing a question and answer. Any information that Mr. Mikew gives me to put it, put out, we put that out at two o'clock every day. If they have questions, they ask us. That's how, that's how we bring these, this information to you this evening. So, we're, we're doing a lot of, uh, mo- mobile, uh, interaction at, at, at this time. We mentioned students. That was decided at our face-to-face, um, at ten o'clock, the, our, our initial meeting, is that all teachers, uh, principals were sending teachers' class lists already. So we're being proactive there. Our kids, even though that expectation wasn't until later this week, our, all of our administrators felt like we needed to reach out right now. So that's being done, uh, but, uh, we're, we're trying to, every day, communicate with all, with every attendance area. And hopefully, that'll help with, with Mr. Roy's issue and assessing. The folks have been very honest, very forthcoming. Uh, Mr. Roy sat in today at two o'clock and gave some, gave some valuable information, and we had a couple of principals ask questions. So it's a, we had about a, about an hour conversation where we just talked. And here's the information, because this is so fluid, it, it is just constantly changing. So we're trying every day at that, that hour to say, "This is where we are right now. Tomorrow, we'll pick it up again unless it's emergency." And we have had a couple of calls this evening.
And it was difficult even to try to sit down and, and, and craft an email and send to the board this weekend because things were changing so rapidly. I'd be right in the middle of the message. I was gonna send you and get a phone call. It was something that had changed. And I, so I didn't wanna just bombard you all with information and just have to turn right around and, you know, send you, uh, revised messages. None of this was really nailed down until Sunday afternoon about three o'clock.
Yes, sir.
When we finally, you know, had come up with a plan and all this conversation we were having with the other counties, there was, uh, superintendents. So it was, uh, it was a challenge, to say the least, uh, to get to where we are right now. But I have to, I have to credit our, uh, our directors for the work that they've done. Seth, uh, Kirk, and, and John, and Angie were here with me all day Sunday. Uh, even let them slip in and sit in on the superintendent's phone conference so that there's another set of ears on, you know, on what we were doing. And all the work that's going on out in the schools, uh, right there with our service employees, our cooks, our bus drivers, custodians. We're doing a deep clean of our buildings right now, since we've got those custodians back and they need them. Somebody said something about the building's being dirty because it's the end of February. Well, the schools are too. I mean, it's, it's just, uh, a great opportunity right now to, to clean our buildings, uh, thorough deep cleaning of our buildings. So that's, that's under, undertaken.
I know Greg's not here, but our filter's being changed like they're supposed to be.
They're on a regular schedule. Uh, it's like Charleston filter, I think, is it? We were now contracting with to do that work.
We went back to that?
Yes, we did. We signed an agreement. Or we were buying the filters, but our guys are doing the filter, changing up the filters.
The, the Facebook page is up and running as of this morning.
Okay, so it's already...
So, okay. I guess Jessica Frye is running it.
No, that might be Lincoln County High School link.
Yeah, that mentioned it.
This one's called, this is Lincoln... This one's called, this is Lincoln County Schools hyphen Student Family and Community Support.
That, that, that is not one that we are u- using. It's Jessica Frye.
Okay.
Cause there's another one, Lincoln County Educators, they have their own page.
This went up this morning and it's, it's been really good all day. I mean, it's been good stuff.
That's great.
But, just.
Didn't have a title yet, did you say?
We had not determined a title yet, so that's why that's not us.
Okay.
And we, we, we will manage very carefully who has administrative rights to that. Because our superintendent is not a real fan of Facebook. I, I don't mean to say that. I mean, I don't, they say that publicly. It is what it is. But he also realizes the importance of communicating with the community, so he is compromising at this point.
I don't think it's a good idea.
You have to dig through around him, go through his wife.
You know, there's, there's that too. Okay, I will, again, it's such a fluid situation, we'll continue to try and keep you updated on what's going on. We have another meeting, a phone conference tomorrow, uh, with the superintendents. And, uh, if there's anything that comes out of that discussion, I'll, I'll be sure to share where you can push it out to. Cause I'm, I'm like Mr. King. I, I think, uh, John said something earlier too. I, I just think that at some point, we're going to see an announcement that, that's going to say that everybody stays home. I mean, I can see it coming, just, uh, as we've been talking about, we can get right down to it. Who are we going to need to make sure things happen here if we, if, if that would, would take place? And we're certainly financed, you know, somebody's about to pay the bills, employees have to be paid. So, you know, you would think you're going to have to have some people working there. Food service, especially if we're still going to be in a position of whether we're doing all that work or we're helping another agency like the National Guard to, to, to undertake that effort. You know, we'll have to be, uh, able to do so. So, yeah, we'll, we'll see what happens over the upcoming days, but I, I just think it's going to, things will change. All right. I want to talk briefly about the, uh, state school board meeting last week. And I'll begin by giving you a copy of the, uh, report for Guy Valley Hill School as well as the action steps in case you don't have both. Yeah, I underlined that. I thought, that's not the copy, but I agree on that. Cause, you know, we've seen the report for, you know, we, several weeks ago. I just, I went back to work, it's been almost three weeks since we first was able to, Mr. Priestley and I saw the report for the first time. In that, during that time, you know, there's been a lot of work, you know, to address, um, the many deficiencies of this report. Our curriculum teams, Mr. Kirk and, or Mr. King and I have worked with the, uh, State Department coordinators. Michelle Blatt as well as, uh, Mr..
Matt. Matt Higginson.
Well, Matt Higginson, time to take it, uh, our new state superintendent.
Blake.
Blake, yeah, I was thinking, uh, cause Steve Payton was involved beginning, uh, in the first, um, map of the department. But we've come up with a very good plan, an, an action plan to address those deficiencies. And there's been a lot of work that's already taken place to, uh, rectify some of these deficiencies. The worker, the, uh, social worker, when, when she gets on board tomorrow, uh, this really will pick up. Even if we're not going to have our students there at the school. We will, it is, and a good thing because we'll be able to have her work with the teachers to, um, put some things in place, like revising the leadership team that we have at, at the school. As well as training on the SAT process, the IEPs, all the things that's recommended in this report. That were, that will be necessary to, um, to make the necessary improvements at the school. So, well, this, um, will be our checklist when Mrs. Staley comes to our board meetings. For her to be able to provide us a progress, uh, report on how things are going. Mr. King and I have met with her two, two or three times already, plus phone calls. Mr. Snyder will join us tomorrow when we meet with her.
Yes, sir.
So that we're all on the same page. At some point, Michelle Blatt will be down to join us. May, I know it will be, she was going to try to come tomorrow, but we know that's not going to happen now with what's happening with the coronavirus. But we, uh, Mr. King and I will stay in constant contact with Ms. Staley, uh, as well as, you know, we'll, we'll meet with her at least once a week, if not twice. If not meet with her, have calls on the phone about the work that, uh, that is taking place. And as you know, um. Well, Mr. Priestley and I was.
Now, so, and this, this corrective action plan here has been accepted by the state board, right?
Yes, I, I get ready to jump into that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, there were, there were five motions made, uh, last week by the state board. And I'm sure you've seen it. I wanted to just give you a hard copy of those here tonight. And the first one, we were anticipating, this, this was unexpected. You know, we were, we were told in our conversations with the department that there would be a motion that the board, state board would, uh, accept the report and adopt the recommendations of the corrective action, uh, for the onsite. The, uh, the piece on there, number one, the part about addition to compliance with recommendations to the report, the Lincoln County Board of Education must take immediate action to ensure that full-time counseling service, services are available to the students at Guy Valley Middle School. That was new. That was not part of what we were informed was going to be, um, the motion or the actions that the board undertook. So, that one was a surprise and I, and I'll say that Mr. Priestley and I are sitting there as, as the state board president is making these motions when, when he handed out the sheet of paper. You know, we're hearing it for the first time. We didn't, we didn't see any of it.
Jeff, so.
Don't run it again.
Let's, in case you don't realize or under, or know what happened that day. Jeff and I were advised that, uh, since the state board, it appeared on the agenda that this was going to be one of the latter parts of their day. So, when we inquired, or Jeff did, uh, we were told to be there at one o'clock to meet with the state board. Eleven o'clock that morning, uh, I received a text saying that this person was kind of surprised that the state board of education had gone into executive session to discuss Guy Valley Middle School at eleven o'clock in the morning. So, I'm on my way over. Jeff and I were going to leave at eleven thirty. So, I'm on, so I text Jeff and so he comes running out the door out here and he's all, you know, and, and we're both wondering, you know, did, have we missed something? Were, were we supposed to be there earlier or something y'all not, we weren't aware of? So, anyway, you know, we get up there and, um, they're at lunch at that time. So, then they came out of lunch and that's when they asked us to come into the meeting. Uh, and they had adjourned briefly their executive session. They'd come into regular session. And then they asked us, first they asked Mr. Mikiv to come up and they asked him some questions. Then they asked me to come up and then they asked me some questions. And then following that, they asked us to, they went back into executive session. They asked us to, to go into executive session with them. We were in there about an hour, I guess, was it? We talked about various things. But at no time, uh, were any of the things in these, other than the first, uh, item here, which was, uh, what we were expecting, the, uh, corrective action plan that we had all been working on or had been worked on. That that was going to be on the, uh, on their agenda, uh, for approval. But we weren't, nobody mentioned us that there was any other actions that would be taken. We came out and they asked, they told us that we could go back into the meeting. So, we go out and we're sitting there. Then within, what, five minutes at the most, they came out and came back into regular session. And then, uh, these others were mentioned. So, we were not, uh, told, uh, that, uh, you have a corrective action plan and we think that's going in the right direction. But we feel maybe that we need to take, there need to be some additional actions taken. That wasn't told to us at all. So, when Mr. Mikiv and I, we're sitting there in the front row and it's kind of like church, nobody's sitting in the first or fourth row. There we are. And, uh, so, and when this is said, that the state board president said he had five motions he was going to make. We were kind of looking at each other and he, he made the comment, uh, I'll give you all a copy of these. And so.
Just the same president, you'd sat through meetings with executive session and never, never a word of any of this mentioned to anybody?
We had, within five minutes of us leaving the executive session with the state board, there was one state board member was a president, he was on the phone. But the other members were in the meeting. We were with us and Superintendent Burge.
He was there, Michelle Blatt was there.
Well, okay, and then Michelle Blatt was there too, Dr. Black. So, they were in there, um, and, and us. And, uh, like I said, they asked us, we talked about various things that are, you know, personnel related, so we can't talk about that. But, um, you know, we responded as we were asked. And, uh, but never with anything mentioned about anything additionally. So, when we were told, you know, we're going to go back into regular session now, we get up and walk out. Within five minutes later, they came out with these.
But no decisions were made in executive session, but they were taped up when they come out.
There were no butchered decisions is what, uh, Mr. Perry said when he came in. So, you know, Mr. Mikiv and I were both in semi-shocked and. One, we didn't know what was going on, you know, we were surprised. And, you know, we didn't have, we, he was reading them off, so we're listening as he was reading them. And, uh, he did tell us that we'd get a copy, but it, you know, they had already been read. So, we were trying to think what each one of them meant as they went through them. So, there was, in that room, no one was more shocked than we were as to what was going on. I'll just say that.
And, uh, and I was, I was kind of writing my down and Sean, I don't know if Ryan Quinn sent them to you or, I actually pulled up the Lincoln Journal and you, you had it posted.
I was driving to dance class. Tabitha wrote them down shorthand and then I wrote them off from my memory as best I could.
Cause I thought.
They were, and I was, I was pretty close.
Yes, very close.
Thank you.
With Jeff and Sean, because with Sean's got.
Yeah, because I mean, I, there were some things I left out that you had captured.
Yeah, Tabitha was, Tabitha was really good.
Well, after the whole thing was over, I spoke to Michelle Blatt and I said, you know, he, uh, said, Mr. Perry said we could have a copy of those. I want to have a copy. And she goes, oh, okay, we'll get you all a copy. So, to that point, we just had, you know, Jeff said, well, here's what Sean's got on, you know, what he had put out there. But, uh, so she went and then made us copies. She gave these to us, but we never seen them.
And the only question I asked when we stepped out in the hallway after the meeting was, did she have any idea when we would get a few, a, a full audit? You know, when would that happen? Cause there's so much work to get ready, prepared, um, for that to happen. And she indicated, she said, well, I think it'll be sometime after spring break. She's just going to take us time, a while to get, you know, a team together to come down. And, and even though O E P A doesn't exist, I'm pretty sure it's going to follow that, you know, that format. I even went back, cause we just had an audit, a four, four years ago, and I kept all of our materials, which I'm so thankful I did that. So that when we get in posi, or start to get in position to prepare, uh, for that visit, we'll be ahead of the game somewhat in terms of what needs to happen, uh, at school as well as here. So, of course, with what's wrong with the coronavirus and, uh, in fact, it looks like we may not even be back in school. You know, my guess is when the visit takes place, probably we'll hear much faster.
Jeff, I'm sorry I interrupted you, Jeff, cause you were getting ready to do number two.
Okay, well, number two was, was the state department, or the state board was gravely concerned with the findings in the Guy Valley report. And likewise concerned that similar conditions could be present in the other schools. And the kick in the gut was the next sentence that said, the board also questions capacity in the central office to address the deficiencies at Guy Valley. And we clearly have a plan to do so, and the county as a whole, so that, that will hurt, that stings. Three, uh, as a result of number two's motion, number three, uh, that's where the, uh, state board, um, charged the state superintendent to conduct a comprehensive countywide onsite review of the, of the school system. The next one, the next piece that I think Mr. Priestley has talked to Howard Cole, because Guy, because this is new. This is new in policy. It wasn't part of O E T A. The four was as part of the countywide review, the onsite team in consultation with the Western New School Board Association shall determine necessary additional training and or actions to be taken by the local board and central office staff.
I talked to Dr. Howard Cole the next day. He wasn't aware of any of this at all. But what he did tell me was that that was in the policy now. Is that the policy was written at, uh, in certain, certain circumstances that the executive board of the, uh, the West, in the School Board Association would help in providing trainings. It would be similar to the training we had back a few years ago when, you know, when we, uh, before we got full control back. Where Howard Super and, and they came in and, and talked with us about board responsibilities versus the superintendent and all that. Similar to that, but he wasn't aware of that. And, you know, at this point, uh, you know, he wasn't really aware of what type of training they would be able to provide for us because in every situation, the School Board Association is not, may not be involved in what's going on there. So, this is something that they may or may not be involved in depending on somebody's decision-making, I guess. But it's in the accreditation policy that they do these type things. Whether they'll, you know, he's, he, you know, he sounded familiar enough. I was just telling him he did it though, cause it's in there. Uh, or he wasn't even aware of what our report was. So, he says, it is in the policy. He goes, we'll reserve the term if we can provide assistance or not.
Mr. Priestley, it seems to me like the state school board needs to start with the Canola County Board of Education because, uh, uh, if I saw things correctly in the newspaper and on TV, Canola County, uh, Board, uh, filed into the open, uh, meetings law upon the back. And I don't recall the state board of education saying a word about that. And this is something we wouldn't even think about doing here. So, I believe they need, I believe they need to start with Canola County with a little bit of training first before they get to Lincoln County.
I'm not going to disagree.
And, and you can, you can, uh, email that too, as far as I'm concerned. Tell them Larry Wilkinson said.
Well, I, I would like them to tell me what we did or did do that we should have in this situation that got about.
I think we should have fired her.
Uh? I'll, yeah, I think we'll.
Well, I'm going to ask them.
Yeah, we can't fire him.
There's, there's some things that, that I do need to share with you.
They discussed some things that we can't talk about.
Yeah. Well.
Number five.
And the last one, number five, current findings and documentation of the onsite team shall be referred to the state superintendent to begin an investigation to determine whether actions should be taken against the certification of any individuals in the county. And there's things we should talk about personally or even in executive session.
But a fun day was heading off. Meanwhile, Jeff, uh, uh, is, they're going, they started doing a few other things. So, uh, what's his name, Mr. Quinn?
Ryan Quinn.
Ryan Quinn. Uh, he comes in, like I said, Jeff and I are sitting in the front row. Nobody's even there. Uh, and Quinn comes in and taps Jeff on the shoulder and takes him out in the quarter there and starts interviewing him. And I'm saying, oh, poor Jeff. So, he's out there for a few minutes and then he comes back in and he sits down and he's, so, you know, we, and about five minutes later, Kimmy tapped me on the shoulder. So, I got my turn. But, uh, yeah, it was a surprise.
Just really, I mean, seeing how this came down, I have to add my two cents for it. Having not been involved in something like this before as a board member. Initially, I was encouraged with what I saw as the. was encouraged with what I saw as the inner workings of the state department of education, and our central office, and our people here to try to rectify what is obviously a bad situation. I saw a lot of teamwork, people whose goals were the same, a lot of effort put forth on both sides, and then this comes down. How is this supposed to foster, I mean, the way this happened, how is this supposed to ever foster an environment trust and cooperation on our parts? Um, do, do I believe personally that these five findings were not addressed and piped up and in place long before you all ever went up there on that fateful Friday, the Friday, Thursday, Friday, whatever day it was?
Last Friday.
This is in the works, people knew about this. Why wasn't it discussed with us beforehand? You know, we had, we had done nothing but bend over backward to try, I mean, and, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, you know, to the point of hiring someone at five hundred and fifty dollars a day at their recommendation to try to appease the powers that be, to try to make the situation better, um, and yet we get kicked in the teeth. This is a cooperation, this doesn't foster a, any, any end that benefits the kids. All this does is create an abandoned distrust, so for all those people that got their joy in doing this, dropping this on you all, kicking you in the teeth, shame on you, shame on you. Get with the program and try to help us, don't pull this crap just because you have the power to do it and make yourselves feel good and look good, you're not helping our kids.
I agree.
I'd like to request...
Okay, I think that's pretty much, okay, this is the only other, no other topics, Jeff, that you want to talk about. Okay, uh, at this time, then, Mr. Minkiv asked, asked for an executive session at seven forty-two PM for personnel matters?
Personnel matters.
Okay. Mr. Baker? Back in the building, phone back. Mr. Curry? Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay.